Good morning.
Good morning.
I will call the February 7th, 2023 City Council Meeting to order. I ask Councilmember David Sisco to lead us to our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Under heaven Father, we thank you today and we thank you for the many blessings that you give unto us, the best of blessings of life. Lord, we ask you to be with our mayor and this council this morning as we conduct business for our city of peace. Just give us some knowledge and wisdom to do everything the right way, Father. Lord, we love you in Christ and thank you for your love for our families. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three. There we go. Okay, item three, there we go. Roll call. I'm Marquesha, I think, I'll see all council members present with the exception of Councilmember Donnell, who is in Washington DC today. Item four is approval of the minutes to the January 3rd, 2023 council meeting. Those minutes were sent out to council. There are no additions or corrections. The minutes will stand approved as read. We have several recognitions this morning. I'll make my way down. All right. So one of the great things we had the opportunity to do is, three years ago, we started the Mayor's Youth Council. This morning, we have a great new batch of high school juniors that will be sworn into the youth council. So as I call your name, if you want to come up and stand right here in front of the council members, then we'll swear you in. Peyton Evans, Home Life Academy. Ben Herbis, Jackson Christian School. Olivia Jones from Jackson Central Mary High School. Kayla Hamilton from Jackson Central Mary Early College High. Anaya Newby, Liberty Technology Magnet School. Anna Grace Morris from Madison Academic Magnet High School. Madeline Tyler, Northside High School. Alexander Mormon from Sacred Heart of Jesus High School. Caitlin Cox is with Southside High School, and she couldn't make it this morning. Rachel Kessner, Trinity Christian Academy. And Lexi Krennis, University School of Jackson. So these students will join our already existing high school, seniors on the youth council, and will be the seniors on the youth council next year. And so, ready to take your oath of office and raise your right hand. Say aye and pronounce your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Uphold the Constitution. And the laws thereof. That I will support. Uphold and defend. The Constitution and laws of the state of Tennessee. Not inconsistent therewith. That I will observe and obey the laws and ordinances. Of the city of Jackson, Tennessee. I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties. Incumbent upon me as a member of the Mayor's Youth Council. Barely and honestly. And to the best of my skill and ability. So help me God. Your 2023-24 Mayor's Youth Council. Parents, I know how it is to be proud, so if you want to come up and take a picture, we'll have them stand for a second. You want to take a picture of them? We can do that, parents.
Mayor, can you get in with them? Can we have two rows? So this row kind of just like, or four people kind of filed in. So go right here. Okay, scoot in this way. Scoot in from this side, thank you. And can you kind of go like in between?
Don't get up.
There we go.
We knew him when.
Youth council members, if, uh, I know your principals and teachers want you back, so you can be excused from the council meeting to head back to class. I would not be signing any waivers or anything more later than that. All right, next up, we have a great opportunity to present Trash for Cash checks. And so the City of Jackson's Trash for Cash is a fundraising opportunity for nonprofit organizations to keep Jackson beautiful, started by one of our Mayor's Youth Councils two years ago. Keep Jackson Beautiful Coordinator assigns a group to clean up an area within the city limits. Nonprofit groups or volunteers donating to nonprofit groups can clean roadways in the city and make $100 per mile up to 10 miles. City provides supplies, verifies the works completed, picks up the bags, and so Robin Chance has been the coordinator of that. And so this round, we get to donate money to several organizations. We have Jaco as the first, and they are recipient of $800. Next up, we have RIFA, recipient of $200. Star Center, $200. United Way of West Tennessee, $320. And the Jackson Animal Care Center for $300. Our last recognition is one I consider extremely important. You all know we had a heartbreaking event that happened on January 19th that could have been tragic if not for the efforts of three individuals that sprung into action, starting with Officer, Deputy Officer Timothy McLean. So if you would come up here when I call your name. Officer McLean responded to the scene and sprung into action. And not only did he spring into action and rescue the newborn from the apartment, he also rode in the ambulance all the way, providing life-saving support, helping out the paramedics on the way. And I don't know, fortunately or unfortunately, got to watch the body cam footage and thank you for your quick actions, bringing it to action. Also, Critical Care Paramedic Megan Brown. And Advanced Emergency Technician Whitney McCord. These two phenomenal ladies did everything they could, and without the three of them, like I said, this event would have been much more tragic. And they saved a new life on January 19th. And so this city owes you our deepest gratitude. And so I hereby present Advanced Emergency Technician Whitney McCord, Critical Care Paramedic Megan Brown, and Officer Timothy McLean with Mayor's Commendation and Recognition for your outstanding service in response to the rescue of the newborn baby on January 19th, 2023. Thank you for your dedication and bravery in service. And then I have, we have two more things. So Matt Marino here is the field representative for Senator Hagerty, and United States Senator Hagerty provided each of you with a letter of appreciation. I think we have one more presentation from Chief Corley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to also present to Officer McLean a Life Saving Medal from the Jackson Police Department.
Thank you all so much. Your job's not easy on a daily basis, but that was particularly difficult, and thank you for the action that you took in the last second. Move on to first readings, and item one, consideration of an ordinance to rezone two areas of property located near 1300 Block of Old Humboldt Road from RS Single Family Residential District to RS1 Single Family Residential District Area 1 comprising of 3.3 acres, more or less, Area 2 comprising of 1.96 acres, more or less.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. It was presented to the Planning Commission, and they are recommending approval of it to you. If you'll remember, this area, part of this area was zoned to RS1 a few months back. At the time, these two pieces of property were not included because there were some concerns about a possible blue line stream and the ability to develop the property that was on the Old Humboldt roadside of the property. But in talking with TDEC and some recommendations from, from people involved in the process, they were able to reduce that to a wet weather conveyance, which allowed them to develop the rest of the property and also get a second access point onto Old Humboldt Road. So we were pleased with the outcome, and again, the Planning Commission has recommended to you.
Are there any questions from council?
Let's happily make the motion. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. This is an item on first reading. So I'll open with the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion move eight to zero.
All right, item two is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located east of Chickasaw Drive from RS1 Single Family Residential District to RS1 PRD Single Family Residential Planned Residential Development District comprising of 42.28 acres, more or less.
All right, you have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. It was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending approval of it to you. This is a planned residential development. You have in your packet the materials pertinent to the type of development, and we have representatives here, if you have any additional questions on, on the planned residential development, but they are here to answer those questions. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of it to you.
All right, any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, if you recognize it at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, come on. I didn't see you. Come on, we'll open it back up. Come on up. Come on up here to the microphone and state your name, and then here's your thoughts. Yes, sir.
Good morning, gang. My name is Ray Vega. I live at Highland Hills Cove, which is adjacent to this property. One of my issues is what's going to happen to the herd of 30 deer? We have 30 deer in the area plus an albino squirrel, which everybody loves. It is like a, an unknown part of Jackson. We're a little, we're not complaining about the homes or anything like that, but we want to know what's going to happen to our wildlife. Everybody's very creative, you might say, and they've built their gardens, et cetera, et cetera, around this little herd. So we are a little preoccupied with the traffic. As all of you know, deer also attract coyotes and foxes and other assorted animals. We have a few wild turkeys in there also. So we were just curious, are you going to relocate these animals or, because a lot of the, like, an example, we grow grass for the deer. I mean, to help them. We don't, we know what's happening in the state of Tennessee with the issues with illness, and we don't want that little herd to be affected, so we keep them close by to keep them healthy. I was just curious.
You have this in your packet. Basically, the development plan for the area is a very low-density type development. They plan to keep as many of the trees as they can. They plan to develop within the areas that are already clear. So the impact of this development concerning the lot, the wildlife that's there would be minimal compared to if it was developed into a traditional subdivision. So, I mean, their plan is to, is to keep it as, as natural as they can.
Pretty much, well, you know, it answers my question. Are you going to open up a, are you going to go ahead and open up Chickasaw Drive, which will make it arid for us?
And the plan is, the only, the main entrance will be off Sequoia, which is off the east side of the development. There is a secondary exit that would come out on the Chickasaw, but that's a secondary exit.
Thank you. Basically, that's all I had to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, is this a good opportunity for, since we have representatives from organizations to be developing?
Let me get the public hearing out of the way, and then we have them up. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to?
There's questions on the access, if you don't mind, Mayor. You mentioned a secondary access.
Before you, so we can get everything on record, so you can sit down and then state your name to the, in the microphone, so we can get it on record.
My name's David Smith, 19 Chickasaw Drive. Hence my concern for the access. The Chickasaw Drives are very narrow drive, very difficult for two cars to pass each other. Right now, there is a gate at the end of Chickasaw Drive back towards that property. Will that gate remain and limit access?
I'll let the representatives speak to that when they come up, but basically, the main entrance and exit will be off of Sequoia, which is off the east side. As you can see, the development plan shows most of the development to the center of the property or to the east of the property. So this is a very low density. It doesn't generate a whole lot of traffic. So the traffic generation will be low, and again, with it being the secondary and not the main entrance and exit, the traffic should be minimal.
Until everyone finds out that the road would be open and use it to avoid the traffic lights on Highland?
Well.
That would be, that would be the concern, that if the road was just opened up, there would be a lot of traffic through there.
Well, the stub from that street, the access to, to the property from that street is open now. I mean, it's, they're not opening anything, they're just, they front that street as it exists right now. So just like any development, they have the ability to use a public street that's, that's available. But again, the traffic generation of a use of this type is very low. That's not their main entrance and exit. It's a very secondary exit, and it's an exit for them, it's not an entrance for them. So the traffic generation will be mostly to the east side of the development and should be very minimal on the secondary side.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I oppose.
Anyone wishing else to speak, wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
My name is Carolyn McCauley. I live on Twin Oaks, the opposite end. I just wanted to know, going forward in the future, where do you all project this going? Five years, 10 years?
I'll let the representatives speak to that.
So we'll duly note that question, and then when we get done, we'll have them come up and they'll, they'll present the plan.
Okay, and I too am worried about our deer, and I've lived there my entire life. It's like sacred grounds to me. It's my backyard. I've grown up there, played in those woods. I have nothing against what they're planning to do, just wanted to know how it's going to affect our subdivision that is residential and family that live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, close the public hearing, and ask the developers of the property if they would come up and discuss what is going to go on on the property. Let me just state your name and kind of just go over the, the plan for the property and what it's going to be used for, and the questions that were asked.
Very good. My name is Jerry Cartonell. I'm pediatrician who works with children and adults on the autism spectrum, and knowing that we have over a half a million children, adults in the United States now, a third of them needing long-term residential care after their moms and dads are no longer able to take care of them. So we are devising a master-planned, modularly-built residential community that will meet their spiritual, physical, mental needs and growth and development. Trying to do this on a very low impact, as it was made, these adults really like to have not compression but decompression, lots of biking trails, walking trails, and our intention is to keep the property very, very undeveloped as possible, except for what's necessary, so they'll have that ability to connect with nature continually, continuously. In addition, because of what we're trying to do, somebody mentioned about five, 10, 15-year plans, this particular community, this will be built out with these 20 homes, four residents per home, 80 residents, plus the, the staff that will care for them and the, the facilities. This is a model community that we hope to, not personally, but to replicate all around the country, because we're going to need many of these to take care of our adults who are no longer able to stay at home, and they are not able to manage their own day-to-day needs. My son, who is a diabetic, he could not measure out his own insulin, and they can't take their seizure medicines and things. So it's a beautiful facility that will be replicated, and each one will not be a mega community, as I can see people being concerned about.
Any questions from council?
May I add, sorry. Hi, good morning. Thank you, Dr. Jerry. I, my name is Rajine Cadiosmith, and I'm with LRK, and I wanted to just, just touch on a few points as relates to the, to, to the planning. And yes, what, what you look at in the master plan is what it would look like over a 20-year period, starting with just a few cottages, you know, two to four built out, and then over time, seeing, seeing it grow. But as relates to what Dr. Jerry has said and some of, and the residents and neighbors, there is, it's a definite objective that the project, that the sites stay as natural as it can be, both for the therapeutic purposes for, as well as maintaining as much of the wildlife as, as possible. And when we talk about entries, I don't know if, Stan, if you'd mind dropping that back up on there so you can see all three. Really, Chickasaw is really more, it says secondary here, but in fact, if you could see the rest of the pages, it's an enlargement. We have the overall site plan. It's really, the primary entrance and the secondary entrance are both to the east. This is an emerg, this would be an emergency only, and it would stay gated, is the intent of the project. So there were some asks about that. No worry, I think if you can kind of visualize it, but it's off to the right, to the east at the bottom, and then if you see that parking, small parking area to support the, the common, there's another entrance. It's coming. Thank you. Yes. So really, it should read tertiary. This is the main entrance and then for staff, and then only, and we're not even showing a road to it right now, but we would look to, if, if it was needed, to have it for emergency vehicle access only and state gated.
So this represents the final, the final phase.
Correct.
And so over time, over the, the next 10 to 20 years, we'd see this constructed, is what you think.
That's correct. And you can see from the key, it actually kind of lays out a sort of a gentle phasing. First would come the community lodge, then would come the, the first residential cottages that are the closest to the east, where we already have, you know, all of the utilities already in place. So we're really trying to keep the penetration to the site to a minimum, and as was underscored by Mr. Pyle, work with the cleared areas as much as possible.
Speaking to the, the traffic question, the individuals that, that you will be serving, do they typically have cars that they're driving in and out, or are they more, they're there and have people visiting?
Okay, so the, the group that we're going to be having here are not going to be sufficient to, to drive, and therefore, they're going to be dependent on being moved around with electric carts to, again, minimize the impact to the area. They collect golf carts, but they're, they're really cool little cars that can transport them from facility to facility, or the walking trails. But no, they, they won't have cars on their own.
Okay. And then with, I guess visitors could come and go as they.
The visitors can definitely come, and they can park, and then again, the electric cars will go in and on the roadways within the facility.
Has there been any traffic study done?
No, because again, this, this development is such a low generator. It doesn't, doesn't require, it doesn't meet the threshold for subdivision, because again, it's, it's 40 acres of property, and we're talking only 20 units at full build-out, so, and those full, full build-out will happen over a 20-year, 15 to 20-year period. So, so the traffic will be minimal, and as, as mentioned, the Chickasaw side is more, is really, it says secondary, but it's really a tertiary exit, and they, they plan on only using that for, for emergency purposes if needed. The exits and the entrances are on the east sides. So from a traffic circulation and generation, this development will be a very low impact. In fact, if this were developed residentially like a subdivision, you'd be looking at, you know, four lots per acre over a 40 lot, you know, you'd be looking at 160, you know, units. Well, is that right? Am I math right yet? And then you'd be, you'd also be looking at multiplying that by residents of those units. So, so again, it doesn't rise to that level, and would be very much, very low intensive development, utilizing the land and disturbing it very little, so. So we feel like it's a, a good match for this property and a good fit for it.
Council wants?
Yes, sir. Thank you all for being here. I just wanted to start by saying, I think this is really great for Jackson. I think it's very progressive, moving in the right direction. We understood that the nearest one was Atlanta. And I do hope that the residents heard that if this was developed out, as Mr. Pilant just said, it would have really, the deer would not have had a place to go. And so, just on a personal note, I'm an animal lover, too, and I do feed our deer. Could you maybe work with one or two of the residents just to maybe have a salt block area, or bird feeders, or something to assure that the deer would still maybe stay? It just might be nice to work with the neighbors just a little bit to make them feel more comfortable about that.
Well, actually, the executive director is sitting next to me, David Cartonell, my son. And after the gentleman who spoke about the deer, I said, let's hire him to make sure the welfare of the deer and the wildlife, and he can watch over that for us. We'll need the, we'll have a lot of volunteers available to help us manage the different aspects of running.
I think it'd be wonderful for the residents, Dave. That's a real big plus. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Any additional questions from council? Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right. Thank you all. Item three is a resolution to adopt a plan of service in ordinance to annex in the proposed zoning of property for an area referred to as Stover, submitted by Andy Stover, comprised of 8.2 acres, more or less, located at 4305 U.S. Highway 45 North. The proposed zoning is B5 Highway Business District.
All right. Do you have the materials pertinent to this annexation request? As always, based on the way state law is organized right now, we can only process those that are requested. This is requested annexation. The property is currently zoned Highway Business in the county, so the zoning of the property, once it's annexed, reflects what the existing zoning is on the property. You have the plan of service in your packet, and we are, the planning commissioner has recommended the plan of service to you, as well as the annexation and the zoning for the property. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item four is consideration of an ordinance to close an unnamed alley between Short Street and York Street.
As you know, our process for closing and abandoning alleys is to, the applicant has to submit an application, and a part of that application is the petition that the property owners that are served by this have to agree to it, so that all are in agreement for the closure and abandonment. And this was one that did go through that process. The application was submitted. The property owners that are served by this are both requesting this be closed and abandoned. So, the planning commission is recommending that to you.
All right. Are there any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time?
So moved.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Have a motion? There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item five is consideration of an ordinance to abandon 15 by 145 section of the west side of Canalco Drive, just south of Lawrence Switch Road.
All right. This was a request that came about by a property owner that has a business that deals with gases that are contained in tanks. They had a tank on the east side of their development, and based on the codes that address their tank locations, they must be a certain distance off the right-of-way to be in compliance. Out on North Canalco, for some reason, I guess this was considered to be a major road at some point, but development patterns changed, there's a hundred-foot of right-of-way that exists out there, and that's way beyond what's needed out there. So, to help them, we are abandoning a portion of that right-of-way that doesn't involve any utilities or doesn't change anything for us, but it allows them to be in compliance, and we see no impact, and the planning commission has recommended that to you.
All right. Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes seven to one.
Item six is consideration of a resolution to amend and re-adopt the Center City Revitalization Project District One Community Redevelopment Plan.
Our Jackson Housing Authority is beginning the first phase of the replacement of Allington Heights, and we're excited about that. They're seeking out some low-income tax credits. This is competitive process, and they have to score points to basically see who gets the monies. And one of the points that are available to them is that the plan be in compliance with the redevelopment plan for the area. And we had a redevelopment plan, and they were in compliance, but because of the date it was adopted, they needed it to be re-adopted so that it could be current. And so, what we've done is gone in and amended a few small sections within that plan that just addresses what they're currently proposing right now. And we're asking you to re-adopt the amended plan.
Any questions from council? Stan, could you quickly highlight what is being amended?
Basically, what they're planning on doing is to, they will be constructing new multifamily complexes, and they'll also be doing some scattered sites, single-family. And so, the plan just says that's what they're going to be doing. The plan already had some provisions in there for Allington Heights and the replacement of Allington Heights. So, it's just basically putting it a little bit more specific, since we know more specific what they're going after right now. It really doesn't change anything. It really doesn't add anything that wasn't there originally. It just clarifies it a little bit better and gives us the ability to amend it and then re-adopt it.
Any other questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Item seven is proposed budget amendment, recognize increase in grant funds of $7,000.
Good morning. This proposed budget amendment, as the mayor stated, would recognize and appropriate an additional $7,000 in grant funds that we would use in our recovery court. No match involved in this.
Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item eight is proposed budget amendment for Jackson Bicentennial Park, amount of $140,000.
This amendment, as proposed, would fund the commitments that the city council previously approved, that were the city's responsibilities in the development of the bicentennial park. This $140,000 would appropriate that money, and the funding for this would come from the general fund, fund balance.
All right. Any questions from council? No question. Just, Bobby touched on, just to clarify, and some of us on the council have been approached for different options from the committee, but just to reiterate, this will hit the commitment from the city. Yes, this fulfills the commitment. Yes, sir. All right. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, and a second. Couple of motions and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right. Item nine is proposed budget amendments for the Jackson, L R K Jackson Plaza Redevelopment Vision Task One, the amount of $122,800.
Yes. As the mayor stated, there's a larger plan that, for that area, the potential development. This would fund Task One in that plan. $122,800 would be appropriated for that, and the funding for this as well would come from the general fund, fund balance.
All right. Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Lady Bobby. Next, I'll ask Ms. Luna to come up and go over several topics. Item 10 is a, I guess we can, before we get to the topics, Ms. Luna and Councilman Taylor and Wallace can discuss kind of where we're here with these four, five ordinance changes. Sure.
Morning, Mayor. Morning, Council.
Put you on the spot.
The code committee has made several recommendations to you as to some changes in the code, and you are to be expecting many more in the upcoming months, because the code committee is hard at work, trying to look at all of the code to see what needs to be changed. The first one in item 10 has to do with Parks and Recreation Board. And if you'll notice in your packet, there are very few changes to this one. I would like to point out that we were bound by a state statute, 1124-103. That state statute gives you two options on how you want to handle the Parks and Recreation Board. Either the council can keep that authority and appoint an advisory board to assist them, or the council can actually appoint a Recreation and Parks Board, and that Recreation and Parks Board will then conduct the activities of the Parks and Recreation System. So, the only change that we have is actually for the membership to be different. Members cannot serve more than two consecutive terms. And also, we made a change in 2104, that the Parks and Recreation Board shall make the recommendation to the mayor as to the individual who will serve as the executive director. So, that's the only change on that one.
Okay. Are there any questions from council on that, on item 10?
I'd just like to make a statement. As we've gone through looking at our codes, and it's been an exhaustive process that we've been at for eight, nine, 10 months, almost?
A year.
A year.
Right.
This, I see is really important. These boards and commissions and committees are the foundation of our government, really. A lot of the work that's done, we've had the planning director come up here and talk about recommendations from the planning commission. A lot of these boards help feed and make recommendations and guide the policy and the directives of the city. And so, it's really important that we get these right. And there's been a lot of thought and discussion into how these recommendations are formulated today, so that I hope that we could come to some reasonable agreement on moving forward on all of these.
Yeah. If I could point out that this, these changes in chapter two, they do not make any changes as far as what the council has done. Back in 1995, the council chose this method. And so, we're just cleaning up some of the language in the board. But we are recommending also that the board become an active board, more active board, and actually look at the duties that the board, that the board has.
Thank you. Any questions on item 10, Parks and Rec Board?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
What I'm assuming, and I'll ask the individuals that were on this, on this committee, is that the reason you wanted to remove it from the council's purview and make it over a committee, is the fact that you could pack that committee with people that were more, hadn't had a better understanding and knowledge, had expertise in the recreational, Parks and recreational field versus people that were elected?
You know, I have to assume that that's what the board, the council did back in 1995, because that's when that was chosen as the method that the council wanted to use, to have an active board, to carry out, to be the arms and feet, so to speak, of the council. So, we're not changing that. That's been that way since 1995. We're just cleaning up some of the language.
Just an opportunity to reflect on this and see if that's the direction the city council wants to take.
That's correct. And that's the recommendation from this committee, that we stay with that method. Otherwise, the council has that authority, and the council has, that puts a lot of duties on the council that will, I think the council probably back in 1995 felt like that people who had that expertise, like you just said, with Parks and Recreation matters, would be far better than the council itself in carrying out those duties.
Well said. Any additional questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item 11 is consideration to amend Title II, Chapter II, Keep Jackson Beautiful Commission.
The code committee also looked at this chapter as well, and decided that the, because it's called a commission, that the people who are on it should be called commissioners instead of directors. So, you'll notice there are a lot of changes within your copy of the proposed amendment, to just call them commissioners throughout the ordinance. Also, there's an increase, a pretty drastic increase, in the number of commissioners on this commission. It's going from 11 to 24. And the code committee, as they studied this, felt like that the increase of 13 people would give a lot more people to the city to be active on this particular commission, and have a lot more, a broader range of things that they could do with more members. The only other change, if you'll look, is that the reports, the code committee felt like it was important that the Keep Jackson Beautiful Commission would file a report with the mayor and the city council. I would also like to point out that the city of Jackson is a member of Keep America Beautiful. If you'll look on the Keep America Beautiful website, you'll see Keep Jackson Beautiful. We are one of the few cities across the United States that are a member of that. So, a lot of the things that are dictated in our ordinance actually come from the Keep America Beautiful program.
One other thing to note is, we're shifting the accounting and responsibility for the management of the funds to the recorder's office as well.
That's, that's correct.
Any questions, additional questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right. Item 12 is consideration to amend Title II, Chapter IV of the Jackson Transit Authority.
In chapter four, you'll see three changes that the code committee is recommending. The first one is in 2403, and the change involves purchases of $5,000 and more, or more. And it reads, "The authority shall first present all purchases and contracts involving obligations in excess of $5,000 to the purchasing department and to the city council for approval." So, the code committee felt like that it was important that JTA present any purchases more than $5,000 to the city for that approval. And then, you'll also see in 2405, "The authority shall also submit a proposed annual budget to the city recorder by April 30th of the year, when the budget is due." So, there's a deadline on, for J E A to get the proposed budget amendments in there. Also, in 2407, there was an antiquated provision in there. The city no longer has its own city retirement system, as you all know. So, the code committee recommended to delete section 2407.
Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition, too, can be recognized at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
What feedback have we received from JTA in regard to these proposed changes? Are they agreeable?
I believe it was Paul Taylor, who was our committee member, who was in charge of the JTA, so I'll let him address that.
Yes. Specifically, what we were doing is cleaning up some of the procedural issues. We've actually just established for our own bookkeeping, we've been, in budgeting, we've been working with them towards moving towards these processes. We're still in that process right now. We get a little bit better every year with this, but, you know, a lot of these are just cleaning up. There's state laws that define the way that we operate. There are state laws that define the way that we operate. And so again, these, this is aligning our ordinances with state law.
Thank you, counsel, ma'am.
Any additional discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item thirteen is consideration to amend Title II, Chapter Eight, Budget Committee.
When the code committee reviewed this, at first, we looked at having a budget committee and also an audit committee. But then, if you'll see, we have, our next item on the agenda is for an audit committee to be a separate chapter of Title II. So in looking at the budget committee, there, there are a few changes, not many drastic ones. But first, we are, we are recommending a change in how the members are selected. You've got seven members on the budget committee. We're recommending that three of those be selected by the council and four of those be at-large members. You'll also notice at the bottom of that first page that we're also noting that there'll be a change in the, in the ordinance, that these people need not be accountants, but they should have some experience in finances and budgets. Then under the powers and duties, you'll notice at the very end of two eight oh five, we're recommending that anything, any city budget amendment over ten thousand dollars be presented to this committee and reviewed by it. And this committee would make recommendations then to the council as to those budget amendments. Then we're adding a two eight oh six for your consideration as well, that public notice be given of the meetings of the budget committee and all meetings subject to the meetings provision in Title VIII, Chapter forty-four of Tennessee Code Annotated, which is the open meetings law.
Any questions from counsel on item thirteen? This is an item on first reading, so we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right. Item fourteen is consideration to amend Title II, Chapter Nine, Audit Committee.
This is an entirely new chapter to be added to Title Nine. That's the recommendation of the code committee. And you'll notice in here that there are a lot of similarities between the code, sorry, between the budget committee and the audit committee. However, it's a longer chapter. One of the things I would like you to look at is that we're recommending that there be seven members, three of those appointed by the council, four at large, just like with the budget committee. And that these people also have experience with audits and finances. Although being an accountant is not a requirement, we felt like that it was important to have people who had that experience on the committee. Then if you'll look at two nine oh five, that's another thing I'd like you to look at. This, this provides the powers and duties. Now, I would like to say that, that these sections actually track what's in state law for an audit committee that a municipality could have. Also, two nine oh six, you'll see that at times, there will be situations where the audit committee will not necessarily need to have public meetings. And so, again, this tracks state law and tells us what can and can't be done in a private meeting of the audit committee. Two nine oh seven, we're recommending that the audit committee be provided with the resources and the funds that it needs to carry out its duties. And we, we are sensing that once this audit committee is picked, and if the council approves it, that they'll work very closely with your, your city internal auditor as well.
Any questions from counsel? This is an item on first reading, so we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right. Move on to second reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment for Ned McWhorter Foundation donation in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Move on to new business, recommendation from the code committee regarding city court.
Mayor and counsel, the, the code committee, as it was looking at the section of the code that has to do with city court and the city court clerk's office, met some interesting information, I think, was provided to us. Before, we felt like that we could make any changes in the code, which is solely our task in our committee, we felt like that there needed to be some study done as to what is happening there. And we heard some comments as to there may be understaffed, there may not be technology, there may not be the appropriate software there. But again, because that wasn't the committee's purview, we asked the policy committee to look into this. Now, as we understand it, there have been recommendations for some new hires there. But our recommendation, if you'll look at the paragraph there, "The code committee hereby recommends that the city council approve and authorize a study to be conducted." Now, you'll, you'll look at all those things that are there. We believe that something needs to be done to boost our city court clerk's office and the city court to let them be more efficient. So this is a recommendation through the committee.
Any questions from counsel? Comments?
Would, I know this is kind of a broad scope of things, operations, functions, personnel, technology, record keeping, economic impact. Could this recommendation be that perhaps you seek out a group to look into this? I'm not quite sure what type of group this would be at present.
We're not either. The committee wasn't either. And MTAS has been contacted. We didn't get very far with MTAS. Someone at the administrative office of the courts has been contacted. But again, I think Judge Anderson contacted them for us. But I haven't sought out any of these groups yet. But, you know, I think probably the best way to handle this is to look to see what actually is going on there and have someone from, that's external from the city, to come in and do a study and try to see what these folks need down at the city court.
Maybe it can be a comparative study to look at whether, of course, technology-wise, are using to make record keeping easier? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wallace, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Luna. And she has worked so hard on this. But one thing I just wanted to say personally is that we cannot be as good as we should be and can be if offices or any of our departments need help. It's our responsibility to give that to them.
Right.
So as, I just want to echo, as she said, their technology, maybe they need more hires. But we do not have the expertise to say what they need. And I had had a few discussions with people asking that maybe since Ms. Luna knows so much about this, that she could form a committee for a search committee to find either a company or group of individuals that could go in and identify the areas where they need help. But it does need to be someone outside the city that can look with fresh eyes and not have anything to gain or work with the city.
A statistic to point out. Supposedly, with the, within Madison County, the criminal matters that Madison County handles through their General Sessions Court amount to about twenty-two hundred crimes a year, charges a year. The city court handles thirty-seven hundred on average a year, which is significantly more than General Sessions does in Madison County, but yet are doing so with lesser staff. So, you know, that was one of the statistics that hit us, wow, you know, you know, are we understaffed? What kind of staff do we need? How many do we need? That was one of the first issues. And I think the mayor's office has been very receptive to helping out city court so far with that and jumping on that quickly. But there are many other needs that we're seeing there. That will help with employee retention as well, which is becoming an issue in city court.
So, Councilwoman Wallace, is that a motion? Or could you put in the form of a motion?
No, it was a discussion.
Okay.
But I do think, I would like to make the motion that Ms. Teresa Luna leads the search committee, informs the search committee to find a person or company to come in to help city court with discovering the issues that they might have.
Do we need to handle the recommendation?
Quick question.
First, or is that a meeting or recommendation?
I mean, I thought, Judge, can you come up for a second? I think Mr. Hovis back. But I think in the meeting that I sat in, all the judges have been checking on an organization or a group to see about doing a study when we had the meeting with the committee.
I think it's a terrific idea to have a committee to study the city court, particularly in our office, as they have recommended.
I mean, do you have a...
There, and I refer to it.
Yes. I am happy Ms. Luna discovered how heavy our workload is. Our person as the clerk do four courts. I have to pay bills, do the budget. I have no help. We have, you have twice as many people up here than I have in the court. And we do thirteen, fourteen courts a week. You have to do subpoenas, dockets, jail lists. Each court, you don't just go and sit in there. You have to work all day. And the turnover is specifically because we're short staffed. And city court, you can get arrested for making a mistake. And that's just something that we need to rectify. And it's just not, it's never been fully staffed. We've never had a full staff. We've always worked the best we could. And if I wasn't elected, I quit. It's just too much work. It's too much work. You imagine processing thirty-seven hundred people. And I, did you count traffic tickets also? I don't even know if those were counted.
This is from the TBI, Criminal Department.
So that's probably not counting traffic citations. That's probably another two thousand a year. And we have to get everything done, and we have to keep running. And everybody's afraid if you make a mistake, something bad can happen to you. So it's just hard to, to keep people, and I don't blame them. If I had, if they had an opportunity to go somewhere, they should go. So I don't, I, it's hard to keep people. The longest work establishment I have now is about three years. And it's a technical job. You have to understand it. Everybody can't do it. I've hired dozens of people, some can, some can't. And you just have to, I can't even fire somebody that's incompetent because then I don't have anybody. And people get sick, they go on vacation, they have emergencies. And sometimes, doing fourteen courts, I may have three or four people. It's just, it's just a lot. And I, I appreciate you doing the study, but it's, it's actually too much. It is actually too much to put on city employees to have to feel that they, I have workers that are sick. They come in because they know if I don't come, then somebody else is going to have to do my work. And so I really appreciate it, and I'm thankful Ms. Luna's looking into it. But I really, really would love to have some help.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? Good question. So is it your all's opinion, Judge Anderson, Mr., that you all would like to have a study? Because this would help you uncover the needs and then help you get the help that you need.
Yes. I, I, I appreciate the study, but I really need some workers. So that would be first and foremost. The study would be nice, but in the meantime, I'm still struggling every day trying to process all these people. I've got probably five hundred expungements. The people need their stuff done because they can't, they can't get jobs because we can't process them in time. And it's just not fair to the citizens.
Yeah. I don't think we can recommend the hiring, but we can recommend...
We have the position posted now.
Can I restate your motion?
Sure.
I would move that we task Ms. Luna with sourcing someone or some group to perform a study to help us with the, the, the scope of work that was laid out in the code committee resolution, or recommendation.
And I'm going to add just a little amendment to that. I don't want that to be just for...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We can't do that. We can't do that. We got to, if you want amended, you have to make a motion to amend it.
That's, that's the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Now, we have a motion. Is, any further discussion?
I have a question, one question. What's going to be happening in the meantime while we're doing the study? Are you, they're going to give workers like ten people? Or what's going to happen to city court while you do the motion?
I think that would be up to...
The city has brought in two more people since the idea of the study began. And that will be extremely, extremely helpful. Our trouble is, is that if we lose a clerk, we lose all the knowledge that that clerk has about the history of our various courts. And if we lose somebody, we're just way shorthanded. But I think that the, the study will reveal that we do need more people. But the two that are there now should help tremendously.
I mean, the position's still open, and we're...
Yeah, we got one, we just got one, we got one coming, I imagine.
Right. Yeah. We were, we're trying to hire just like with every other department.
And let me point out this, that the, the words that are used in there, the committee tried to make them as broad as possible to cover every aspect. Of course, we don't, we didn't know about city court and the city court clerk's office. That was, we were just trying to find words, the operations, function, personnel, technology, record keeping, and economic impact. We felt like that covered everything. So this study, whoever does it will come in and assess it from the bottom up to see what's needed.
How long would that take, do you think?
I'm sorry?
How long do you think that it would take to do the study?
I can't speak to how long it will take for that group or that person to do the study. I'm hoping that we can find someone within the next thirty days and get the work started. That's the goal.
It would be ideal to have a lot of this adjusted as we move into the budget season.
Especially, especially technology-wise. We can put out the bids for technology, and we can upgrade that. I think a lot of that's antiquated systems, too, that duplication of work that doesn't need to be done.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Ms. Teresa, are you comfortable or would you like another person? I know you can do it. I've seen you're more than capable.
I'm comfortable doing that. And I think my first goal will be to go to the administrative office of the courts in Nashville and ask for someone who's over the city, the court clerks or the state, and speak to them and go from there. That's going to be the first goal.
Okay. I know it was a second. I'm in support of that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa.
Item two is a consideration for Jackson Fire Department request to apply for a five hundred thousand dollar grant, including matching ten percent to replace self-contained breathing apparatus. Chief Riddle. Before we talk about that, Chief Riddle, bittersweet announcement that I have to make, I think I may have told you all. But this will be the last city council meeting that we have Fire Chief Samuel. One of my greatest personal achievements is I got to remove the interim tag and talked him into staying longer than three months when I took office. He was supposed to be interim chief for three months, and then it was six months. And I just kind of just quit talking to him about it and stayed longer than he originally anticipated. But is retiring at the end of this month. And so we'll have a, we'll have a bigger reception for him at the, at the end of the month before he retires. But I want to let you all know that this will be the last time you see Chief, Acting Chief Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Jackson, the residents, the visitors. And I am honored to say that I am proud of Mayor Tonga and city council members for honoring and supporting the fire department so that we can accomplish our mission. Thank you.
Proud of you. Thank you.
We have currently Deputy Chief Riddle. It will be next month, Chief Riddle. So make a presentation on what we're doing.
Morning, Mayor and Council. We're proposing to pursue a AFG grant, Assistance to Firefighters Grant, for the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. That grant is a ten percent matching. And what we intend to use that for is replacement of our air packs that we use when we go into hazardous environments. Our current air packs are ten years old. They still make parts for them right now. But we're trying to project into the future. So if we put in for this grant right now, we probably will learn if we got it sometime after the first of next year. So we're trying to be progressive and come up with the funding to be able to pursue replacing our air packs.
All right. Any questions from counsel?
Let the motion approve.
And a motion, there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have you all gotten the MOU for the... All right. Do we have the MOU document? Okay. So we'll take a brief recess for, provide counsel with a, with a one-page document for our MOU for our next agenda item to allow them to review it at their request. And then we'll, we'll come back in a few minutes to resume the meeting. And then we'll, we'll come back in a few minutes to resume the meeting. Meeting back to order. And item three, oh, sorry. I thought you were closer than you were. Item three is a consideration of Metro Drug Fund Sharing Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding. Chief Corley?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What you have before you, and I apologize that it wasn't in your packet before, is a copy of a one-page MOU between the Jackson Police Department and Madison County Sheriff's Department and the new twenty-six judicial drug task force. And the district attorney, General Pickens, is here, as is Director Randy Coyne for the drug task force. If you have any questions about what that is. But we're in the process of standing that drug task force up, which will be for the entire judicial district, which is Madison, Chester, and Henderson counties. And so the current Metro Task Force or Unit, Metro Drug Unit, will eventually be folded and into the Drug Task Force for the judicial district. Part of that process is standing up that unit is that they have to have their own drug fund. The Drug Task Force has to have a drug fund. So each of the counties and the participating agencies are providing personnel and also funds to help stand that unit up. And that's what this MOU agreement is about, is that the sheriff and I have agreed that the current Metro Drug Fund that we manage, we're going to donate a percentage of that fund, and it's $40,000, to the twenty-six judicial drug task force to start their fund.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion to, except the memorandum of-
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one.
All right.
Thank you.
Item four is consideration of a resolution to commit to match storm water, stormwater hazard mitigation grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, the stormwater operations has, under the Hazard Mitigation Plan has, that you have passed with the county. Under that, we have picked out six projects that we deem priority. There are massive amounts of projects, but right now, these are the six priorities. So we are proposing to do a grant for FEMA under this Hazard Mitigation Grant Plan. In your packets was everything, the pictures and the mats and everything. So the only thing that we're, before we can do the actual approval, is to get a twelve percent, twelve point five percent commitment from the council. It's usually split up seventy-five percent FEMA will pay, twenty-five percent, but we, we have that with the state. And it could be lower, so, but anyway. And this is over a three-year period. And so we just need your approval to go ahead and put in the grant.
Any questions from council?
Quick question, yes. How did you pick these locations that we're going to work on?
It was by priority and, and I guess, I'll let you talk just-
So they, they had to be in our Hazard Mitigation Plan to be able to-
Yeah, we had a plan and they, and they had to, they had to write-
Yeah, back in, I think I just started with the city. We had a meeting, a number of people involved, that we had to update our Hazard Mitigation Plan. I believe it's upgraded every five years. So the council did approve that, I believe, last spring. And then a project cannot be funded through hazard mitigation if it's not on that list that was approved by the city council. So we did make a couple amendments to that that have been accepted, I believe. And those are the six projects. Basically, they're very high-dollar-end projects that have to be taken care of, that we need the funding for because we don't have sufficient funding internally to do those six projects.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes, the, the distribution of funds, so from what I'm reading, seventy-five percent federal, twelve percent city? Is there a county contribution? Is there a state contribution?
State.
State. So this is, this is their boilerplate from their original grant. They did notify all municipal governments four or five months ago that the, the federal government is bumping that up to a ninety percent match and the state government will then match five of that. So we get this in in time and get it approved in this round, and we can be looking at a five percent match as opposed to a twelve percent match.
How, how often do we look at this plan? Are we looking at this annually, updating?
That's every five years.
I believe it's every five years.
Every five years.
And I just-
We haven't done it every five years, we started looking at it more as we see the projects come up. And I think as once we get the study done, completed on our stormwater infrastructure, that'll definitely be it. And there's some, this is a joint project list from city and county. So it's really directed by Jason Moore, EMA Director.
And the program that we approved, or the city council approved, was with FEMA. Jason was involved in that. We all sat in the same room and we filled out all the paperwork and he guided us through the process.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
A motion to second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Yes, thank you.
Item five is a consideration of a resolution to support the Local Park and Recreation Fund Grant. Ms. Kristi David, come up here and give us the information on that.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Y'all will bear with me, I'm going to open up my computer here. So today, I'm here to ask for you all's support for our Local Park and Recreation Fund Grant opportunity that requires a match. I think it's important that we show the constituents here what we're proposing, as well as you all. So if you'll bear with me as we go through this presentation. All right, so we'll discuss the grant, the why that we're doing this, the vision, and then what everybody wants to see, the proposal. If I can get the computer to cooperate. Okay, the Local Parks and Recreation Fund provides grants to eligible local government entities for the purchase of land for parks, natural areas, greenways, and recreation facilities. The funds can also be used for trail development and capital projects in parks, nature areas, and, natural areas and greenways. So this grant was created and is sustained by Tennessee State Property Revenue Tax. They have not opened this grant open, they have not opened the grant for a cycle for about three years since before COVID. So they have an abundance of funding this year to give away. Because of that, there is no maximum ask. And you're actually getting extra points if you're asking for more than $2 million. Tennessee Code annotated states that sixty percent of that fund has to come back to municipalities. So this grant does require a fifty percent match and there is a minimum ask of 20,000. Why are we wanting to do this? Three reasons cited by National Recreation and Parks Association is economic value, health and environmental benefits, and the social importance. The, the statement that you see here is from the National Recreation and Parks Association. There is one sentence that I feel like is very important for why we're here today. There are no communities that pride themselves on their quality of life, promote themselves as a desirable location for businesses to relocate or maintain that they are environmental stewards of their natural resources without such communities having a robust, active system of parks and recreation programs for public use and enjoyment. The vision for this proposal is to provide updated amenities in an effort to attract new residents while offering top-quality recreational spaces for current residents. And the proposal, this proposal is about a $4.3 million project list. So we will start with Conger Park. Conger Park currently has a two- to five-year-old playground area that is estimated to be twenty-plus years old. Most of the playgrounds that you see in this presentation are in that twenty-plus-year range. The average lifespan of a playground should be between twenty-two and twenty-five years. So most of our playgrounds are beyond or right at that, that lifespan. We also have new playground equipment at Conger that was installed last year. That's a five-to-12 age playground piece. It is light blue, green, and gray. So this new piece would match, would match the, the current piece we just had installed. This is not exactly what we will put in, but it just gives you an idea of what could be going there. Also at Conger Park, the lower tennis courts there, one section has already been converted to pickleball courts, as you see on the left. The right tennis courts are not in playable condition. We've had meetings with the pickleball group and they would like, the pickleball community would like to increase their pickleball courts here in our city. So we would convert the other two lower tennis courts to pickleball courts as well. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the United States, just for reference. Melissa's Park, we would be converting the tennis courts there to post-tension concrete. The reason why that's important is right now, we have to resurface those courts about every three years. And that costs anywhere between $35,000 and $60,000. Post-tension concrete would allow us to bite the bullet one time, so to speak. And then those would be in excellent condition for at least ten to twelve years. So we would not be putting money there every three to five years. We would also be adding a pickleball court out south. We have a very robust pickleball community that plays inside the South Jackson Community Center. They set two courts up inside that building and they have asked for us to put a pickleball court out in the South Jackson area. Melissa's Park also has an older playground piece that you can see pictured here. This is my neighborhood park, this is the park that I grew up in, and that is the playground that I played on. Now, I'm not, I'm a young whipper schnapper, as some would say. But I assure you that that playground is about thirty years old. So we would actually install a new piece there that would match a new installation that should be happening there in the next month. Also with all of our playgrounds, we have to meet ADA compliance. So you'll see that included in some of these, that our playgrounds currently don't have an ADA access path. So this grant would fund those paths as well. This is the playground that is at TR White Sportsplex. This playground will probably require the most work. It's not noted in this picture, but it's a significant slope there. So it will need quite a bit of dirt work to get it up to par. The other issue with this playground is that the sun beams down on this playground. So when we have our summer camps there in the afternoons, the kids can't go over there and play on this playground because it is so hot. So we would be adding a shade structure to the new playground installation there, as well as the ADA compliant access path. North Park, the picture on the left is the current tennis courts there. They are not utilized very much, if at all, because we have the beautiful tennis complex on the other side of Highland that is used a lot. And so we are proposing to convert the six courts there to, to pickleball courts. We can get about eight courts per three courts. So this whole area would end up with about sixteen pickleball courts. Also, we have an inline hockey rink at North Park that is not used at all for its purpose. And so this grant will allow us to tear that out and install a splash pad. Which is, we have one at Centennial Park, we have one in Bemis. So this will provide us a splash pad on the northwest part, northeast part of the city.
Can you go back and touch on the ADA?
Yeah.
Piece of that, yeah.
Yes, so one of the high points of all the playground equipments and the splash pad that we'll be installing is that they will offer inclusive play. As you can see represented in this image, this will be an area for all abilities. There will be some type of inclusive playground equipment that is included with every playground that we're proposing. And this is Bennett Park. This one, as you can tell, is also very dated. We would be replacing that equipment piece. We would be getting new swings. And then the concrete pad you see there, it used to have a pavilion on it. It is no longer there, so we will be replacing that and adding a pavilion. One of the things that we are going to try to do is in these neighborhood parks, we're going to try to make them the colors of schools that are close to them. So Bennett Park will be JCM colors. The TR White Sportsplex Park will also be Lane College colors. We're hoping that will bring a sense of pride to the community. They'll want to take care of it and will have some community buy-in. So this is just an example of what may go in at Bennett Park. This one I'm super excited about, the skate park. You all have been approached before about the skate park. You've approved the skate park. This is the final rendering of what the skate park will look like. It'll be located at what we are now calling Match Point Park, which is where the tennis complex is. We are giving that an actual formal name, that area over there. So this will, this grant will allow us to fund that skate park. And as Tony will tell you, the city of Dixon has a state-of-the-art skate park. So I think it's fair to say that Jackson can have a state-of-the-art skate park. All right. Wallace Road Park. So we will very soon be installing a new playground piece at Wallace Road Park. It is not going to go where the current playground is, it's actually going to move up closer to the basketball court. Because of its location, we have to put in an ADA compliant walk path there. So what we're proposing is to add a parking lot where the current playground is and then putting in a walk path to the new playground. And that area will also be, will, will provide lighting through there to make it just a friendly area where people will feel comfortable going and taking their children to. And parking is very needed for that park. Wendy City Road Park. I know that's not a very creative name. Hopefully, we may have a naming contest or, I'm not sure what that'll look like. But our master plan currently says that we need a park in the northwest part of the city. So this is the land that is south of the fire station on Wendy City Road. What we're proposing here is to add a parking lot, a playground, a walk path, and a pavilion. And this playground is not going to be your typical playground. This is what we are proposing. It's kind of a ninja warrior adventure playground. So this would, as Captain, or Chief Riddle said, his guys will be on this all the time. And, and it just happens to be called Hot Lava, so it works. Everything that you see proposed here is in our master plan. It has to be in order for the grant to fund it. So now, let's talk numbers. I know this is kind of hard to see, I believe it was included in your packet. But we've identified it's twelve or thirteen project sites. Our overall match requirement will be $2,154,036.51 estimated. We have an estimated ARPA fund contribution of $800,000. As I've said before, I don't believe that we're going to have that full $800,000. I anticipate that being between 250 and 500, once we get all the numbers in. So what we're requesting is for you all to agree to match through budget for the next two years and estimated, on the low end, $825,000 up to $1 million to fund the match for these projects. And before I ask any questions, we have a lot of supporters that are here today and I would like for them to stand so that you can all see, we have our pickleball community here. We have our skate park community here. They are all here to show you that these, this is what they want to see in their community. And I think it's important that we start investing in our recreation and parks.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Kristi. And we're, we're competing for people now. And this is a great way to add quality of life investment to our community. So any questions from council?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Splash pads, number one, open Centennial passes. Question about that and the play-down equipment over there, I mean, it's pretty outdated.
Let me address that.
Okay.
Playground equipment, we had a playground inspection about two years ago. Playground equipment at Centennial is relatively new, there's nothing wrong with it. The usage there has not been like other areas, and it's only, it's not even 15 years old.
Well, we do, I apologize, it's not on the slide, I don't, I guess it got deleted, but Centennial is included, the playground is included.
Is it included?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't know where it went on my slide, but it is.
Okay, but it's not, but even at that, it's not that old.
Fifteen, fifteen and 20 is not too big of a difference, and it's used a lot, and our splash pads is totally outdated.
Well, I'm not going to debate you, but when we had an inspection, that particular playground is in excellent shape, it is. Now, I mean, I appreciate your concern, but sometimes we have to understand, let me explain this. There are other playground areas that have been neglected. There are other amenities. Now, what we have to make a decision on, let me explain how this has to work.
Wait, hold on, hold on. We don't have to go that far in deep, and I understand what you're trying to explain. But I have a question about Centennial pass and the splash pad. What about the splash pad up there? What's the, how old is that?
Splash pad over there, how old is that, Kurt? That pad is not, what? About 10 years old, 12, 13 years old, basically. When we redid the, when we took the stadium out, the baseball field there, that one there, but, I mean, those things can take place.
Okay, but I mean, I just have to.
We're not going to.
Because I know the question that I'm going to get, so I got to ask the question here because.
I understand.
You know, basically, the same question that I'm asking you is going to come to me.
Right, I understand.
So, I just want to make sure, I mean, I support.
What we've tried to do. What we've tried to do is, for this community, and I'm passionate about this, is that we've got to elevate and have a diverse inventory of leisure things. And what this is, this is a starting point. And this starting point is to bring those neighborhood parks and things up to a level where we can begin to look at existing facilities that pretty much are recent, that have not had many difficulties or problems, and then we move from there. The skate park and all those things that Christie did and put all this good work in, and Councilman Taylor and the board, is that we cannot, you know, it hurts us when we go to conferences, and I have to express this. We go to conferences in Clarksville, Murphyboro, Franklin, Germantown, they have a wide array of amenities. This is not the ending, this is the beginning. This is the beginning, okay? We have so much more, we haven't even touched our community center issue, which every community center that we exist in is a hand-me-down. So, this is a beginning, councilman, and I don't.
Okay, but my question is, I'm still, I have to ask the question. So, my thing, I understand when you talk about diversity, when you come to diverse, you're actually talking to the wrong person. Because I'm always about diversity across this city.
I understand.
For all of them, but then I have to also speak and ask the question to make sure, I mean, pickleball, I mean, we can play pickleball over in East Jackson?
Well, I have to, I have to.
I mean, you got to offer it to us so we have opportunity to play, because you got to introduce new sports, like soccer. I'm glad they're doing something at TR White with soccer.
Yes.
Because we got to introduce our kids to sports that they don't want to get opportunity.
And we're on the same page, but I wanted to explain the fact that how we looked at this is that this is just a beginning, and we're not going to neglect, and, look, I'm not going to neglect any community. I'm definitely not going to neglect East Jackson. We've done a lot of things. I'm just wanting you to be comfortable to know that you can refer people to me and explain to them, and we can explain to them how this was done, but I agree with you, I don't disagree with you. But we're on the same page, but those things are going to be taken care of. We're not neglecting any community.
Thank you.
And since I realized apparently some of my slides disappeared, what was not included in that Shirley Mercer walking trail is going to be redone with this funding. Also, we are going to get restrooms at the Stella Duncan Park, which is in Bemis. They've had a porta potty out there for, I don't know, a while, and the citizens have requested a restroom to be able to take their kids to the bathroom when they're playing at the playground.
But I mean, and I thank you for addressing that, but I mean, the thing about, what would happen is, looking at this slide and looking at this today, news people here, the first thing they're going to say is what happened to this particular area, and that's going to be the number one question that are going to be asked. So, I just have to make sure, I mean, I have to speak for, you know, so I may answer that question if it comes to me. Thank you.
One question is Melissa's Park, we've got a pretty good expenditure here for the post-tension concrete for the tennis courts?
Yes, sir.
With the movement toward pickleball, I noticed that it says pickleball courts, but it also says install new pickleball court, it's singular. Are we investing in an old court?
The courts at Melissa's are used by Southside High School tennis. That's where they play their games at. We didn't feel like it was appropriate to take that away from that community. And so, we wanted to leave those there and explore the option of adding a new pickleball court.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Good morning, Christie. This is all really exciting stuff, I think our parks are long overdue for this type of treatment. But my question is, you know, once, you know, if and when these new things go in, these repairs, what do we have planned to maintain cleanliness, safety, and just overall efficiency of them?
So, for this grant, we have to submit a maintenance plan. We don't really have one right now, that's something that I'm drafting. I've been looking at other cities and what they have and how they do their maintenance in their parks. And so, we will have a comprehensive plan for maintenance that will go up with this grant. I myself am going, at the end of this month, to take my certified playground safety inspector. That's something we haven't had on staff, and so, I will be getting that certification so that I can inspect playgrounds. So, we are moving toward a more proactive maintenance plan.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council?
Just want to commend Christie, she's put a lot of work into this. And to echo what the mayor said, you know, we're in a competition with other communities for residence and business and economy, and this is a key component to that, is providing parks, quality parks and recreation to our existing community and those that we're trying to attract. And so, I'd just like to thank Tony, Christie, the board for their work in moving this forward. When it comes to budgeting, one thing as we look into this, it's my understanding we'll get, we could potentially be awarded this sometime next year?
October, maybe.
October of next year.
Yeah, we'll be notified probably the second week of May, but the process of this grant is that there has to be a state-executed contract that comes down. That contract will have all of the projects on it. Then, as we decide which project we're ready to start on, we have to submit a design plan to TDEC. TDEC will actually come down, do a site visit, they'll sign off on that plan. So, the earliest, if everything moves through legislation quickly, would be March 2024 before we break ground. And that's kind of what we're anticipating.
How long do we have?
We have three years.
Three years, so.
Three years from when? Not from the application, but from?
From the distribution.
From the distribution.
So, really, this could spread over three fiscal years?
Three additional starting next year, so starting FY '24 year.
Right, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, '24, '25, '26.
How we would distribute this.
Would we need to potentially budget for it for next year?
A portion of it, yes.
And I'm going to work to identify the projects that would be like low-hanging fruit, the things that we want to go ahead and knock out. My immediate reaction to that would be the pickleball courts and the tennis courts and the skate park. Because all of the prices that we've been quoted for, for those, they were already had a 10% contingency. I added another 15% contingency, so I feel like those projects are going to come under budget, which will allow us to add more amenities with our playgrounds and those kind of things. So, I think the playgrounds will be our secondary projects. We'll go ahead and knock out these things that should come under budget first, and then that way, we can really beef up our playgrounds and do some cool things there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to just come run in after Councilman Taylor did this, but I've thought about it for weeks, how you came into this job politely, aggressive, really got to work on this with the grant. I mean, it's really just outstanding what you've done. And the American Disability Act was passed in 1990, so I, we've got to get on that. But just really praise this to you for doing this, and the committee and everyone else, but outstanding.
All right, any other questions from council? Move to approve? Second. A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Counsel, don't get used to getting applauded when you make a vote.
It's a rarity.
Yes, it's a rarity. Item six, consideration of a resolution to support application for the FY '23 CDBG block grant to be matched by Western Tennessee Healthcare. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item seven is consideration of the CPI increase for the landfill. So moved. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item eight is consideration of a contract with Big Bang Softball for a youth softball tournament provider. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Do you want to tell us about some?
Good job, sir. Everybody voted? Let's vote again, everybody vote. She hadn't called it.
Six to two abstain.
I didn't.
Okay, all right. Item nine, consideration of committee and board appointments. Appointment of Beth Ann Simpson to the library board.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one abstain.
High appointment of Perry Riggins and Katie Garcia to the Public Art Commission.
Move the approval?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Reappointment of Carol Emery to Keep Jackson Beautiful.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Reappointment of Wayne Arnold and Jana Helms to the Jackson Municipal Regional Planning Commission.
So moved.
Back in motion, second. Further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, item 10, sunshine of the budget amendment is less than $10,000. Item 11, consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
No further business coming for the council, meeting is adjourned.